Young kids, six-year-old, four-month-old, come on River Drive every day, walking with them. They tell you there is no space to walk with kids, to walk as adults, to run, to cycle. So there's, there's no place to hide, whether somebody's speeding, distracted, you know, whatever speed they're going, it's going to be dangerous for a six-year-old or four-month-old. So really appreciate again you sharing your timeline, Bill, for when you plan to share investigation, but would love to hear if you have any strategies for, again, collecting that, that other perspective, not the vehicle perspective, but the pedestrian perspective.
Sure, happy to. And also getting people safely from one spot to another. It's, it's interesting, just, just anecdotally, the difference between Wilson and River, which basically convey traffic in a similar manner. I see a lot more people out, walking and feeling comfortable to walk on Wilson than, than on River, and maybe that's the undulations, maybe it's the curvature of the road. But, but yeah, absolutely, we'll, we'll take a look at that as well.
For anybody who wants to communicate anything with us, you can certainly send us emails and tell us about your experience in the area. And even if it's not along those, on River, if it's in that area and you want to talk about something totally different, great, send, please send it along so we can package all this up, take a look at it in a comprehensive way, and try and make some real concrete changes.
My name's New York, you know, I live at 1621 Wilson Drive. My kind of disagree that Wilson Drive is safer. Because we have a blind hill between, between Ridge Road and Center Road. I also want to talk a little bit about the flags that are put up, they're up right now. When she said before, there is, I'm a runner, walker, walk a dog, walk grandchildren, there's nowhere to go when those flags are up.
I was just there today, I was thinking the exact same thing.
It's so dangerous, and you're coming up the blind hill, the car is coming at you, they can't move over because they're afraid someone's coming over the hill, and the flags are there, can, can we, I don't want to be a jerk, can we spread them out? Can we put them further in people's lawns? I don't even know who puts them up.
I have no idea where to put them.
As someone who lives on Boston Drive, who's ever been, and is all about it, so.
It goes from Marietta all the way down to Columbia. I have no idea who's done it.
We should be able to do our neighborhood without having to worry about the wonderful flags, though. That's made it up.
Yeah, I mean, it just makes it twice as unsafe. So I think they'll probably take them down tomorrow, I might go out and talk to them and see if they can maybe spread them out a little bit.
If you find out who's putting them out there, if you want to jettison email, that'd be great. I would love to know who's doing that. It's been going on for years and years.
Has nobody here noticed that?
Clyde, Clyde.
Clyde's designer.
Oh, is he?
Is he?
There's a bunch of flag poles down there.
It's got, it's got a blinking solar light at the top.
Is it even labeled, the flag?
Hold, hold over for just a second.
Hi, my name's Ann Diane, I live at 1010 Wheatland Avenue, and I won't buy a house that doesn't have a sidewalk in front of it. Does township consider installing sidewalks?
I think we'd consider it. Yep. Yes?
I live on 154 Wilson Drive, at the very top of the hill, and I'm here to say that every time I mow my yard, or leave my driveway, I fear for my life, and anybody who's walking, their kid themselves, their stroller, especially, I mean, there are cross-country teams who run up and down there.
They're almost blown over yesterday.
Who are even on the wrong side of the road. I, I have to say, Devin's been out a couple times because I keep complaining, and he's been very kind and thoughtful, but it's really scary, and when I mow my bank, it scares me to have to step out in the road to turn my mower around. So I really think that a speed ramp on either side of that hill, because as Anita said, you can't see what's coming and going. It's, I think, very dangerous, and I'm really surprised that nobody's been hurt or worse.
Bill Reed and Melissa Reed, we're at 1422 Quarry. We pretty much try to avoid the other side, just because it's pretty dangerous. I do think the line painting is one of those things, it's probably a gift and a curse. It makes it look like it's a roadway now, you know, with the double yellow line, so it is, obviously, everybody knows it's a cut through. Same thing with Wilson, it's a cut through, but the lines are certainly helpful, but kind of give that thought that it's still road. I know Marietta Avenue is 35 miles an hour. Right, you know, in perspective, the, the roads in the development are 25. So maybe they're, you know, a lower of, I mean, not going to get lower than 35 on Marietta, get that, but maybe 15 in the neighborhood, at least visually, because if you, if the speed limit's 15, 25 is now acceptable, right? Because if the speed limit's 25, 35 is what people are going. So that's just a thought. I know the residents over on East Temfield Township, on Farmingdale Road, they put those speed humps in there. I know that everyone hates that, but you know what, they had a problem, and they fixed it with that. So just as a thought, out of Farmingdale, there's those speed humps. Thank you.
Hi, Linda Sweetie, River Drive. I've lived in School Lane Hills 30-plus years now, and I have seen this problem get progressively worse. My concern, and a somewhat complicating factor in my mind, is what's going to happen when the trailhead at Marietta Avenue and River Drive is completed, and the increase in the traffic, and people from our neighborhood are going to be walking to the trailhead, and there's going to be cars coming through there, both from Marietta and then from, you know, Wheatland and, and Jackson. So, you know, I, I see that as being a real complicating factor, and I don't know if that's being taken into consideration with respect to solutions, or possible solutions, but I wanted to express that concern.
I can tell you that the developers of the trail are thinking about that, because I've had those conversations. Good. Hello?
Hi, my name is Helen Ebersole, I live in 1305 Wheatland Avenue, and over the last couple of weeks, my sister was visiting during that summer, whatever, that was going on on Wheatland Avenue, and all of the UGI, and then the road, half the road being completed, et cetera. So she parked at the T at Jackson Drive in Meadowbrook, and parked far enough down the T so that if a, a traffic vehicle or truck was backing up, you know, they'd have plenty of space. Well, she went to go home, I walked her down to her car, and her car was hit. So that's another thing. If they come back and do the other half of Wheatland, I think they need a little bit of training. And also on Wheatland, when they were on Jackson doing whatever they were doing, they were screaming out on Wheatland Avenue on a Friday afternoon when their day was over, like it was happy hour in Wheatland, and, you know, we can't be having that, it's unsafe. Thank you.
Yeah, Glenn, Glenn called me, and we had a conversation about that about a month and a half ago, and, and yeah, we've made our complaints known.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yes?
Karen Owens, 1539 Center Road. I was, in talking with people about some of these ideas, I was told that we can't use radar in Lancaster Township, and what do we need to do to change that? Because it seems to me we're not looking at some of the technological things that could solve these problems if they were enabled in our, in, in our.
Yeah, you are correct, as far as in the state of Pennsylvania, the only state where municipal officers are not permitted to use radar, okay, only state police are, okay? So to help us out, please write a letter to your local representative. It is actually, I believe it's in, John, in the state, or in the senate right now, I think it was approved by the senate.
It's been in and out of the House and senate for.
Many, many years.
Well, since I started.
Since, right, yeah, for many, many years. But the more letters they get, that would be great. I think their concern from years ago is there's a lot of small boroughs in, in Pennsylvania, and they were going, and they're thinking these small boroughs weren't going to make it as a moneymaker for, for these small boroughs. I, I don't know, I mean, there's ways to regulate that if that would be the case, but yeah, right now, we're the only state that is not allowed to use radar, so.
Can you use LiDAR instead of radar?
Well, so what we can use, and what we do use is, it's called V-spec, where it's, it's two white lines that have usually about 100 feet in between. The unfortunate part is, when, when we operate that, when the person goes through, because I use front bumper for the first line, I turn it on, right, to, for the distance and the time, then they can see us, they can slam on their brakes, and by the time they go through the zone, then they're, they're within the speed limit. So that, you know, and that's our struggle because of those lines there, so that's where we struggle. And also, in some of these areas too, we're not permitted to, we can't enforce speed unless, until it's 500 feet after the speed limit sign. So some of these smaller streets and these developments, we're limited, we, we can't legally, we can't enforce speed. So that's where we run into the issue there too as well, not just not being able to use radar, but because there's not enough distance there for us to enforce it, so. That's what we run into. I, I know, your frustration, I wish we did have radar guns, that would make things better.
Are you a new police department?
No, I'm with Mannheim Township.
Oh, okay.
So, but yeah, so, okay, so hopefully I kind of answered it for you.
It's just, you know, there's got to be a way, and there's so many new technologies.
There is, absolutely, yeah, but we're just not permitted. So please write a letter to your local representative, that would certainly help us out.
You can't issue a, like a reckless driving ticket for these people?
You can't technically.
We're driving recklessly.
Well, you can't technically enforce anything until the speed limit is over, or until you're past the 500 feet. Because I can't testify in court, technically, what their speed is, and that's the problem that we run into, so.
Louis Thane, 1521 Ridge Road. I'm so grateful that the victim of the hit-and-run was represented here tonight, and that she was livestreamed to see that, how many people care about the neighborhood, her safety, her recovery, and will do something about it. And, Bill, I know you have been very responsive in this regard. I wanted to mention a couple of things that, I hope that there will be some gathering of ideas from the neighborhood, because we're prioritizing the neighborhood, not those folks who are cutting through, but their safety is important as well. And clearly, these are access roads to get from Columbia to, to Marietta, so that's clear. But the neighborhood is the priority, and the safety of everyone. The, the safety zone, the, the walking lanes are of varying widths throughout these two roads, both Wilson and River. Is there a minimum established depth that, that the walking path should have? And if, if there is, or if we can get one, can we make it possible for homeowners, assist them, in widening those areas without damaging their properties and their sense of ownership? Secondly, I, I notice in, in front of this building, there are plastic bollards and reflectors indicating end of one, one-way, or, and, you know, and one-way begins at that point. Those plastic bollards won't stop a car, but they can really calm traffic and slow it down. They're inexpensive, they could be immediate, and they don't give a false sense of safety, but they do give a sense that drivers have been warned. The, the reason that perhaps people go to the, or areas went to the speed humps, is because there was no other remedy tried, and you mentioned, Bill, the incremental approach. So I'd love to hear, coming back, what would the incremental approach be, and what would the timelines be for each of those increments, if, if in fact that's the way we go? Because a speed hump will probably solve it, but it's the thing that I, I hear that formally we don't want to do. So where are we? Thank you.
So the, the guidance that we use for, for traffic, traffic calming measures is PennDOT's Traffic Calming Handbook, and we try to follow that progression. And that progression has warrants for type of road, volume of road, size of road, and so again, when I talk about, and previous crash data, average speed, so the data that we're collecting just doesn't go into an arbitrary decision-making process by us, and, and actually, PennDOT does provide assistance from an organization called LTAP, and we've had them out, most recently over near Country Day School, where we've had some traffic problems with their traffic flow change and the growth of the school. So to, to give you a sense of what that progress, or some of that progressive action might be, and that we've had success with before, is exactly what you're talking about. The bollards are, are logical next step in some cases. We installed those on Southwest End Avenue over the last year to, in high crossing areas to visually narrow it, but also provide a bit of a corral and a shorter distance for people to cross from one side to the other. We did that daylight intersection, intersection daylighting over on the east side this year as well, with, with much success, and in various aspects of, or various areas around Hamilton Park. We also started installing in-road reflectors, as, as you might know, if you go through Hamilton Park, we have a number of one-way streets, folks from out of the area get confused, and we have folks going the wrong way down one-way streets, so we've started installing some of those reflective signs that are white on one side, red at the other. So, so signage, road traffic, road narrowing, both visually and with obstacles, is, is, is kind of the next progressive step along that way, and PennDOT has a number of other recommendations there. This is not really applicable, I don't think, to River Road, but we've been working on procuring some solar-powered illuminated, illuminated pedestrian crossing signs in places that are appropriate, and we should have those up over near School Lane. We're working with Country Day to get those over on School Lane, where it comes into Hamilton, I'm sorry, Hillcrest, and, and then we're, we're looking at doing the same thing over near the school zone at Smith Waydown Elementary. So those are the types of things, so we use the data, we plug it into the PennDOT process, and then we work it along. And, and where we, where we can or, or able to seek outside, or need outside assistance, we, we'll bring folks in from the state and, and get them to do a study as well.
Yes?
My name is Elaine Malcolm, I live at 102 Jackson Drive on that corner where all, everybody rolls through. Just to add to what you just mentioned about the PennDOT manual, they just updated, which I'm sure you are aware, in October of this year, they put in a lot of language and suggestions about contextualizing their recommendations for communities, because we're not all one-size-fits-all. And I know that's what you've been using over the years, because that's what you have to use over the years. So that's exciting to think about, that there's a little more, you know, movement in there. I wanted to reiterate Ann, and, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Louis.
Louis's comments about alternatives to the recommended next steps, and in looking into the Lancaster City for recommendations, which I know we don't live in the city, but what are they doing, because there's lots of cop, of traffic calming areas in there? And I was directed by the head of the Public Works Department to all kinds of resources, and one happens to be done in Boston, which is involving speed humps, but they are installing over 500 speed humps every year, to have about 1,500 of them. I am not saying that's the answer, but it certainly would be an answer in certain areas if you're going to contextualize, not have it being across-the-board answer for everything, because, you know, maybe there's no room for sidewalks on River Drive, maybe having all those ballards and lights and all that will help in some ways, but not necessarily calm the traffic like we would like to see as pedestrians and bicyclists. And the focus seems to be with PennDOT and this Boston and Lancaster, is really taking into account the traffic, meaning motor vehicle traffic, as well as pedestrians, as well as bicycles, and how do we do that and address that? Because it only takes one person, it, it, you didn't even have to die, like, that's, we can't let that happen again. I mean, we can let it happen again, but do we really want to let that happen again? So, there you go.
Maybe we could go to someone in the back of the room. Yes, Hello?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm at 507 Southwest End, I'm going to, after what that gentleman up there, Bill, said. We had, they put ball, bollards and everything in up there around where the schools are, and where the kids cross all the time, it still hasn't slowed down the traffic. I mean, there are people speeding, in fact, the other day, I was out pulling weeds in the front, and some guy in a straightbody truck started at the top blowing his horn, doing probably 60 miles an hour, so that, and he was blowing the horn to make sure everybody was out of the way, but that's still not going to stop somebody that's looking in their phone and walking across the street. I still say speed bumps where the kids are crossing for school is the way to go. I'm sorry, that's, it's not, the bollards are not, they're working to an extent, all that does is slow everybody down, it's turning into the school, or on Fifth Street, or on, over on Alma Avenue, but that's it. So, sorry, I didn't know you people were going to be here tonight.
Yeah. If I could just make one more comment, when I was looking at Boston's website about slowing traffic in safe communities, they have in big capital letters, "Speed humps do not interfere with snow removal or emergency vehicles." The whole city of Boston is signed up for that, it does not. All they do is, I mean, they have a sign that's saying where there's speed humps, and then the, they lift the snowplows slightly to do it, and the emergency response vehicles, or, I don't know, that's how you say it, are not having a problem, so. If that's always been a reason to not do it, or one of the factors to not do it, that, I think that's important to, to learn, yeah.
So what I'd like to do now, we've, we're about a half an hour in, we've got a fairly full agenda, if there's someone who has something that they'd like to say that is different about the traffic, I'm all ears. Yes?
I'm Peter Kinsley, I live on Golden Road, and I just wanted to say to all of us who are pedestrians, I'm on River Drive twice a day, have probably been for 10 years. In the code, in the vehicle code, it specifies pedestrians are to be walking against traffic. I think if we constantly try to do this, it makes, it doesn't calm down everybody, but everyone knows what's going on. And the reason for it, I believe, is so that they see you, you see them, and everybody knows, there's nothing to do but let the pedestrians have their way. But it is law, and I know I have many friends who are shocked when I tell them that, it's, it's specified.
Absolutely agree. I cannot believe it, especially with what's happened on River, and I was on it the other day, someone walking directly towards me, with traffic coming to their back. I can't help it, so, yeah, but, okay.
Can I ask one more? My name's Brian Green, I live at 102 Jackson. When can we expect some action to happen? I think we're all here in agreement that, hey, there's a problem, and, you know, accumulating crash data, to me, seems a little bit, I don't know, kind of crazy, because that contemplates we're waiting for crashes to happen until we do something. We know there's a problem, everyone agrees with that, so what, you know, let's not wait for another crash, so we have the appropriate data to do something. When can we expect something to happen? I think that's a legitimate question that we all.
We're in the middle of all this right now, and as we gather this information, we're trying to figure out how to, to best approach it, we're going to take Bill's approach, and we're going to do this methodically, we're going to do it right, and make sure this doesn't happen again. Can I tell you it's not going to happen again? No.
But is there any expectation, is it like December, January, April, May?
So, so we will, most immediately, like, I would expect you to see police cars out there in the next week, I mean, we'll, we'll talk to Mannheim Township without getting out there, but, but I think the first.
Let me sit up if you want to. I've called Mannheim Township on two occasions, said you can park in my driveway and have a plain sight at the stop sign, and no response.
So, so you, you may be taking up on that very soon?
I'm happy to.
So you're asking what steps we'll take. First of all, I, I should probably clarify, when we're talking about crash data, it's not we're sitting around waiting for more crashes to happen. One of the data points that we pull is, is previous crash data, previous accident reports, previous complaint to report, so that's just part of a myriad of things that we're going to try to put together. But what we can do most immediately before we go through that process is to have police enforcement out there, and we've talked about that, and we're going to, Mannheim Township Police out there very quickly, and I would suggest that as you guys go through those stop signs, that you pause an extra second or two, because there, there will be police out there, and you will see enforcement, and that's a commitment that we have.
There's the expectation that the new police department will carry that, carry that through, and.
The new police department gives us a little more direct control about how we utilize those services.
Excellent. So if we could, I'd like to move away from the, the traffic issue now. Please feel free to come back next month if you want to talk about it some more. I don't want to keep you here through the rest of this oh-so-interesting meeting that we're going to have, but if you'd like to leave now, that's great, if not, that's fine too. So.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Come back, come back and email us, write us.
Thank you.
Call us.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, hi, Brad Kinsley.
All right, why don't we move over to the trees? I heard what was said in the last meeting. And so hearing that, I, I formed a, a committee, and we're going to start to meet here, beginning mid-first quarter of 2025. Ilah Wurst, I don't know that she's here tonight, she's going to be joining us, Paul Tebow, thank you, Terry Finger, Terry's not here, I don't think, Catherine Hopkins, I know, I thought you came in, there you are, and Judy, I'm not going to get her last name correct, can you help me, Catherine Blauk?
Yeah.
Judy Blauk? Wonderful.
Jody.
Judy?
Jody.
Jody? Jody. So that, those are the members on the committee, and they represent the, the east side, Climate Action Group, Hamilton Park, Wheatland, and Woods, and so we'll be talking about how we can better address our, our trees, so. Hi, Laura.
Hi, Laura Olent, 29 Woods. We were just thinking, you know, one of the things that calms traffic is having a lot of trees on your street. So we always want more trees, so I'm, thank, thank you for starting this committee.
Yeah, I think it's important, and that could be one of the things we talked about.
We don't want, we don't want our street trees taken away.
Yep. So the reason we're going to meet in kind of early, mid-20, first quarter of 25, is we've got some other pressing issues right at the moment. We have a budget, we have to finalize by the end of the year, we're going to be bringing in a new police force, got to get them up and running by the end of the year, and we have a building we need to build for our police department. So that's why we're going to move this issue into the first, first quarter of 25. And thank you for those of you who want to participate in this process. Yes?
My name's Allison Kilar, I live at 107 Atkins Avenue, and I just have a couple of things to clarify about the committee, like, what's the charge?
So we're going to review how we approach trees in the township, we'd like to know how residents approach trees in the township, and we're going to take a look at all that, knowing that one size does not fit all for every area in our township, and figure out a way to, you know, accommodate pretty much our tree needs.
I think there should be like a written charge?
We're going to do that.
That's communicated?
But we're going to do that in sometime in the quarter of 2025, so thank you very much for those comments.
And is there, part of that committee, is it going to include like a professional arborist?
Uh, maybe, if we decide to, yeah.
And then I would like to suggest that the committee also have an element of, like, what the committee decides is publicly communicated?
Absolutely.
And then if the township supervisors disagree, like, their disagreement needs to be publicly communicated, so that there's like all of those levels of transparency.
Yeah, we're going to, when the group gets together, we'll decide how we want to approach it, certainly.
Was the call for people to submit?
No, I picked them.
Pardon me?
I picked them.
Right, like, was it, how publicly did you cast the net?
I didn't cast a net, I picked the people to be on the committee.
Okay, all right.
As chair, that was my prerogative.
Okay, sure. Then, okay, so I have a different question about. Then, okay, so I have a different question about trees. Do you have any plans coming up to like plant any trees? As, as the, does there any?
Planting any trees?
Plant trees?
How many?
Uh, we actually just planted eight within our parks, another five and plus a bunch of shade, um, trees over on St. Joe's. And we just are ordering another twenty trees to be planted this year, yeah.
Awesome.
Okay, great. Because I'd like to suggest a place that they should be planted, which is a spot along the vacant lot, I don't call it a parking lot anymore. The vacant lot behind Atkins Avenue is between, um, I'm trying to think of the names of the restaurant.
Valentinos.
Between Valentinos and Atkins Avenue. There was like a black pavement, like quasi sidewalk put in and a lot of shrubbery and some nice plants were removed. Like not all, there was, there were weeds too. But now there's some area that could be planted that would actually shield some of that vacant lot from the, the people across the street on Maple. So I wonder about planting there?
We'll take a look at it. Sure.
Okay.
So moving on to our library and a presentation from Lancaster County Library.
Good evening, I'm John Heimlich, Director of Donor Advising for Lancaster Public Library. For those who don't know, Lancaster Public Library is both the Downtown Branch and the Mountville Branch. So closest branches to this community and, and Lancaster Township falls within our service area as assigned by the library system of Lancaster County. We're one of fourteen libraries in the county and each of those other than Mannheim Township, which is a municipal library, each of us is a nonprofit that does, along with receiving some municipal funds, receives a lot of support from the community. Also wanna note that Lisa Holland, our Executive Director, is here. When I get to any questions at the end, she may be better suited to answer a few of them. And thanks for the rigorous traffic discussion. As a neighbor immediately across the border in Lancaster City who runs and walks my dog through all the roads named, I appreciate all the work you've done. Lancaster Public Library, our mission and vision. Lancaster Public Library inspires, empowers, and strengthens our community by connecting people with information, ideas, and enriching experiences. By providing equitable access to vital educational resources, exceptional programming, and community-building opportunities, Lancaster Public Library is recognized as a dynamic center of knowledge and a cornerstone of a thriving Lancaster community. To give an idea of how residents of Lancaster Township specifically have used the library most recently, this is our last complete year data, 2023. Twenty-three percent of Lancaster Township residents are library cardholders. And just from Lancaster Public Library specifically, twenty-six thousand seven hundred and twenty-five materials were checked out within the year. And to give an idea of how much that is valued at, nearly seven hundred thousand dollars in free materials that the community accessed within the year. I'm guessing that some of you have gotten to come into our new library space on North Queen Street, that's a photo, our Business and Reference Center. I started with the library almost exactly a year ago and I've been thrilled to be in this role and to be working this way in the community and supporting such an incredible resource in our community. And I've got to learn a lot about what the services are that we offer beyond books. And you may know some of these, there's a lot of different non-book materials, long games, American Girl dolls, one of our most popular, parachutes, I've checked one out for our neighborhood night out for the kids to play with, a lot of cool stuff like that, ukuleles. And we of course have programming as well for children, adults, families, people of any age. We have a lot of e-resources that you can access through our website as an audiobook user, that's one of my favorite parts. The two that I wanna note specifically though, they're at the top because I think it's important for this to get out into the community, our community leaders, our residents to be aware of. If you talk to people, either yourself, you could access or know others that would benefit. Our Business and Reference Center, which is pictured there, has a number of databases that are quite costly to, to have access to, prohibitively so for a small business, a startup, to be able to do market research and to look at other businesses, for nonprofits, to do grant research. These databases are really powerful and a wonderful resource that residents have the, have the opportunity to access. So if people are looking for, start, looking at starting a business or have a small business, if somebody is in a new leadership position in a nonprofit, please let them know about that resource. And the other is our Sensory and Autism Resource Center. This is for individuals on autism spectrum or other, that have other sensory disorders. Really cool resources, it's a very unique resource to the community. Things like a weighted blanket, a family could try out a weighted blanket to see if that helps their child without having to go and invest significant funds in that. So get the word out with the community about those, please. We also in our new space made a lot of enhancements. Growing up in Lancaster, I am sentimental about that old space on North Duke Street, but as majestic as it was, it was also dark, dank, mildewed, not a, not a lot of natural light in there. This is a much better space for a library and how the library is used in a community today. So a lot more accessibility, advanced technology, things like that. And one of the things that's really exciting is there's a lot more public community spaces and these can be rented out by businesses, by nonprofits, by families for a birthday party, whatever it might be. So that's anywhere from a pretty small room that seats about six people up to a room that can hold two hundred and fifty people. And so again, this is a community resource and we want people to use these resources, especially would highlight the Flex Office, that is that smallest room, that room specifically is available to nonprofits to meet with clients one-on-one for free. And we want the community to be aware of and utilizing that resource. And we're also really excited that in January, we'll be starting an outreach librarian. This is funded through ARPA funds, that's the, uh, the, the rescue plan that came from after COVID through the federal government, that we receive these funds through Lancaster City. And this dedicated outreach librarian and a band we're purchasing with those funds will be getting out into the community and really expanding what we're able to do in terms of outreach and partnerships. And so we would love to talk more with the community about what we would like to see with that. To give an idea of our budget, sixty-two percent of our funding is what we call library-generated and that's about fifty percent of our budget is fundraised from individuals, from businesses, grants, foundations. And then around fifteen percent, seventeen percent is things like passport processing. You can pass, you can get your passport renewed at the library and funds support the library through that. Of course, late fees, many of us have supported the library through that. And photocopies, those sorts of things. Thirty-eight percent as of 2023 came through municipal funds and that includes Lancaster Township. And we're very, very grateful for that and very grateful for our many individual supporters, I'm guessing some of you in this room. This shows the national average for library funding, thirty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents on average per capita to fund local libraries nationwide. Pennsylvania is not set up very well to fund a lot of things, as you know, and that includes public libraries. Our municipalities, the fourteen municipalities within our service area specifically, we average a dollar and thirty-two cents per capita in municipal funds. Thank you to Lancaster Township, who is at two dollars per capita, which pulls up that average versus municipalities that do not pull their weight in that area. So we wanna thank you for that. Pennsylvania's recommendation is five dollars per capita. And so that is, as we're going around, we know that jumping from wherever a municipality is at the moment, in this case, two dollars per capita, to five dollars per capita is not something likely to be done any year. That would be very difficult in managing budget and all the competing priorities, building a new police station, things like that. But that is sort of where we would like to get to with our municipalities over the coming years, if we can work together on that. I'm not gonna go through all these specifically. Essentially what it shows is we do some of the highest level of service for our library in Pennsylvania with some of the least funding. And this is a real tribute to our staff who are incredible stewards of the funds that as a municipality you provide, as individual donors that you provide, good work will be done and is being done with all of the funds that we are receiving. As you probably know, if you read the news at all, we've gotten some pushback over the last year within the community from some of our municipalities and, and others in our community. And one of the things that was helpful in the feedback was that we could be more transparent in our communication and what we are sharing with the community. So we updated some policies, our program policy, and these were sent ahead of time to the supervisors, program policy, meeting room policy, and the application for rental that goes with that meeting room policy, which was also helpful to update because we have so many more opportunities for rentals in our new building. And we also created an updated statement of welcome and respect that we're really excited about, that I think can raise our values and who we are as, as a place for our whole community and everyone in our community. If you wanna see any of those, they are available on our website. These are just a few of the like four hundred programs that are run up to this point in this year. There's a lot that are in the STEM area, science, technology, engineering, art, math. So we have things like the microscope program, telescope program, builder's lab. We do have laptops that are available for teens and young adults. Of course, the services that come in terms of internet access and computer access are so important to many, many people in our community who can't keep paying for internet, it gets more and more expensive for all of us. And things like Bits and Bytes, that's an adult course that introduces various levels of technology from very, very basic up to some more advanced on particular programs. We have recently held our first two fully Spanish language programs, story hours, no translation, all in Spanish, which we're really, really excited about in terms of inclusivity for our whole community and a lot of other cool stuff. I won't get into all the details, but check out our programs on the calendar. If you have an interest, there is probably a program that would connect with you. We have seen really dramatic increases in the usage of the library and part of this has been connected to moving into that new space. There's a lot there, but patron business, checking out of resources, and especially I mentioned the importance of internet and computer access, more than double the amount of computer connections within the library in 2023, which is really exciting to see the community utilizing it in that way. So, a lot of information, really fast. I do have hard copies as well that I will leave with Bill that can be distributed then out to anybody who might want them. Thank you, thank you both. This year, Lancaster Township, and this is, this is an increase over previous years, is providing us with thirty-five thousand dollars, which is an incredible contribution, as I mentioned. I think that is around two dollars per capita for Lancaster Township. We wanna thank you for that contribution, makes a huge impact on the community. And again, wanna thank those of you as individuals who also contribute. I do wanna take questions, but I will say, as I said before, we would love to get to five dollars per capita in as many of our municipalities as possible. You do know that there are some municipalities that are not aligned with the mission of the library right now and are withdrawing funding, are threatening to withdraw funding. And so we would especially be grateful at this moment for municipalities who do align with who the library is in the community. If you and I would count Lancaster Township among those, would continue your generous support and consider increasing that amount. We are especially encouraging our municipalities to consider at least a four percent increase for the budget for this coming year, which I think would take you to thirty-six thousand four hundred. And if it is possible to go somewhere above that, to start moving towards five dollars per capita, we would be incredibly grateful and, and are grateful for the support. I have my contact information up there and we welcome any questions from the board or community, from myself or our director.
Do you have any questions?
I don't.
No? No? Yes.
Where are you parking? How about in Lancaster Library?
Well, you know, we do anchor a parking garage. Our landlord is Lancaster Parking Authority.
Okay.
As you know, we've had some issues with them. We think we may finally be settled and they will take some more responsibility of maintaining the building. We had asked for free parking, they refused to give it. We don't even, the staff, we pay our own parking.
And this is the lot that's, it's off behind you?
It's above us. It's the Christian Street Parking Garage. It's, you get often, you in and out of it from Duke Street.
Okay.
You see it.
But it's not the Duke Street Garage.
And you see it from Queen Street, but it's the Christian Street Garage. And it's right past the Duke Street entrance, literally right past it, you, you make the turn and you go up and you start on the third floor.
Okay.
You can take the elevator and when we're open, come right into the library. But I know that this is a really big issue for a lot of people. We wish we could solve it. We've had people say, "Well, we didn't pay in the other building." Well, you were supposed to pay in the other building, so I can't hope that you didn't pay. But know that even the staff, we are, we are, have not been given parking. And we even asked that if we could get thirty-six spots, we would pay for them, we have a ten percent discount, knowing that you get paid every month for those. And the answer from the director was no.
We do have free parking in our Mountville Branch.
Yeah.
We have free parking in our Mountville Branch.
Are there any plans for them to assign? Cause it says Christian Street Garage, but if you don't know that issue to the library.
It is, is there? Oh, the, you just say, oh, you can.
Parking for the library.
I can ask that, you know, a real, because it, we're kind of blinding.
The average person, you know, the front of the library is here, you go around, right, the Duke Street entrance, that's to it, it's very confusing.
Yes, I mean.
Good thought, thank you.
We do have one free parking spot on Marion Avenue at the very corner beside the Verizon A lot of times it has a car in it, it's supposed to be a ten-minute spot so you can run in and out if you're just picking something up. Unfortunately, a lot, if it is a, if the car isn't owned by a city employee, they may not get a ticket. There is no, they can park wherever they want to, when they want to. So I have asked for them to ticket these cars and I can't get it. But you can actually, if you park closely, you can get two spots in there. We're not counting how long you're in there if you're using the library.
There's also book drop. If all you're needing to do is drop off a book, there is a book drop there on Christian Street as well, that's an easy access.
It's underneath the parking ramp.
John, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you for giving some time in a busy evening and.
Yeah. We've got an increase in our, our population here, so we're gonna go to thirty-six five for 2025.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving right along, we're, as you pointed out at the beginning of our agenda. I did wanna mention that we did have an executive session on the seventh, talked about a contractual issue. Do we have any issues on the secretary's report from the seventh or the twenty?
Only on the seventh that the report says that I adjourned the meeting, but Eber in fact adjourned.
Gotcha, okay. So we have a treasurer's report with that. And then just with the hit and run crash from River Drive, I do wanna say that it was, we had great support from the community. We put a crime watch coast out there, probably within about forty-five minutes after it happened. We got video, rain cam and video, we actually got a couple pictures of, of the vehicle several miles away, then someone's obviously sold a crime watch and like piecing it all together certainly helped us out. So the community definitely helped us out with that, with that investigation, that's still ongoing, so always much appreciated. I know one thing we do run into, people have rain cameras, a lot of them just have it like live feed. If you could spend the extra couple bucks to, to actually save it for like a week, that would certainly help too, cause sometimes we run into like, it's just a live feed, then we can't bring it back. So, but if you can save that for like a week, that would definitely help us out or help, help you out as a citizen or help out your neighbor, so, yeah. That's it. Any questions? Not for me, but thank you very much. All right, we've got a sewer report, recycling report, seventeen point eight seven, safety committee meetings are from September twelfth, everything is. are from September 12. Everything is available from the township workshop reports.
Good evening. As you know, Tom is off this week, so he's not here, so I'll be giving you the full report. Couple things on the agenda tonight for action, planning zone or LTPC type issues. These last, it seems like it's been going forever. I think this actually started in 2023, if I understood correctly, the Creekside South Apartments we've been dealing with all these months. Last month I reported that we kind of fired the proverbial shot across the bow to get some attention. It seems to have worked. Just in the last week or two, we've worked with the property owner, have come up with a plan to remediate the electrical problems that we found. And I'm happy to say, last week, they picked up some permits to start working, and today, I saw from my own two eyes, this afternoon, they were in the buildings working, working to remediate this electrical issue. So they tell us two weeks to remediate all of it. That seems like a really quick turnaround, but we're hoping for the best with that. So we're very pleased to see some traction going there, and we feel like we've got a good plan to move forward with it, and we're making progress now. Zoning hearing board, we do not have anything for October's meeting. November, we will be having a meeting. There's one resident is applying for a short-term rental application permit. That property is, it's an older house where the property owner lives in the principal house, but has an old carriage house that's been already, is, it's an accessory dwelling, so it's already accommodating for overnight kitchen and so forth. They're looking to do the short-term rental just on the carriage house, so that'll be heard at November's meeting. We don't really anticipate, I mean, it seems like they have a good plan for that, so we're not really anticipating any issues that we see. And lastly, we, just as an FYI, we had a resident on Sterling Place do a whole bunch of work to their property without a permit. There was some confusion there, some significant work too, not just little things that maybe they didn't know. I mean, it was, I would think is something most homeowners would realize, they need some, a permit for structural type work on the back of the house. So we've been dealing with that. The ball's kind of in their court at this point, and we're just kind of waiting for them to get back to us. So I have, unless you have any questions?
Questions for Deb? I got one, John.
Yeah.
1515 Ridge, is, we have on our agenda, the stormwater management, I think.
Okay.
Is that the lot between the two houses that are being built, or is it for one of the houses that's being built?
So, man, 1515 Hillcrest is unfortunately the name of the stormwater management plan, which creates two lots. And the lot that's farther to the east that has a house that's substantially built and a lot of landscaping is going on around it, that's called 1511. That's been assigned a house number 1511. The vacant hole in the ground, that's 1515. We're looking for a building permit to come in sometime. Then 1519 is the mini Monticello-
Yes.
That's under construction.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for pointing that.
Sure. I don't know if that answers your question.
That answered my question.
Okay.
Yep, yep. All right, we'll just move on to you then.
Sure. So I failed to include for Kim, the announcement that our historical commission is meeting on the 2nd of December. So, sorry, that didn't get into the agenda, but just let you know that that is happening. We've been working pretty hard on the historic resource inventory, updating that, and hopefully we'll have that to you sometime next year, ready for consideration. So with that, I really don't have anything else.
If anybody wants to learn more about our community, follow Ben on Facebook or wherever he is. Great, great stuff. I mean, I love it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, moving on to Devin.
All right. As you may be aware, the leaves are falling. The leaf collection is in full swing. I just will note that if everyone in the township could bear with us, the leaf flows are heavy, the complaints are starting to come in. We understand, we're getting there, we're trying our best. It's just a lot of volume at one time. And that'll probably happen for the next couple of weeks.
Yep.
Few things to note here that we've been working on, the renovations to the basement for the temporary locker rooms and stuff that may complete in the report. Woody waste hours have changed for anyone using the facility. Through Thanksgiving, they're 2 to 5, and then we'll go to winter hours starting in December.
Post those on the website?
We do, yes. Yep. And then the only other thing I have to note on here that would stand out is the 902 grant that we applied for, for the Woody waste site. We got approved for $200,000.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Thanks. Yeah, so it's a good, hard work. Hats off to Tony and Joanne, helped put all that together, and we got it pulled off. So we ended the planning stages.
That's great. Thank you, Tony.
So any, any other questions on the report?
Me? Bill?
Oh, Chief, go first if that's- Okay. So the bid was approved on 10/28, and construction began last week, mostly for the exterior, which has been great, great morale booster for the new officers coming in. I'm super happy about that. 15 officers accepted their preliminary job offers and had their last, I'll say official kind of day of processing on October 31st. They all showed up, had some drug screening, finished some paperwork just to become employees here, and got fitted for uniform stuff that was size specific. So all that has been done and ordered. The, kind of what I've been doing the last couple of weeks has been writing the department regulations slash policies, kind of a little bit of the boring stuff, but stuff that's going to be essential for the members to know what's, how to proceed and how to conduct themselves. Completing the MOPAC requirements to specifically make the officers now part of Lancaster Township Police Department within MOPAC, so they're have the legal authority to enforce the laws for the township. So finishing, probably won't be able to finish up that till they complete range and qualifications, which will be, is planned for the second week in December. Corporals or supervisors, there's four of them, they are starting next Monday, November 18th. The other 11 officers are starting December 2nd. Kind of been hiring and out. Their specific schedules and what they're going to be doing each day leading up to the January 1st go-live date. The plan, if uniforms, everything is appropriately in, and I feel confident they could go out on the road, they're going to be doing some ride-alongs the last, hopefully, two weeks with Mannheim Township. At least each officer riding for at least half a shift or a full shift with a Mannheim officer would be great, a Mannheim Township officer at the, at the end of December. With the holidays and the concerns about how much equipment's going to hopefully be in by then, we'll see how that goes at the end of December. Thanks to Devin and the Public Works guys. We needed, since we're going to be here a couple more months, we needed a little bit improvement, modifications here in the township building. Devin and his crew basically made a full locker room that can accommodate 16 male officers. The evidence room was improved upon, lighting was improved in the basement, and I've kind of been just finishing up some touches with ordering some of the more minute details or more minute items that are needed for the police department to get up and running in January. So that's where we're at with the police department. Any questions?
No.
I just have one question. Are there no female police officers?
There is one. There's one female officer.
Okay, I just wondered if you could hear mention of the locker room.
We, there's two pre-existing locker rooms that Mannheim utilizes downstairs right now. They're not the greatest, but there is a female one that's going to be adequate for the one female officer that we're going to have. The other one wasn't quite adequate for as many male officers as many officers we're going to have here, the male one.
Thank you. Thank you. Bill?
Just want to make sure we emphasize that we are going to have a swearing-in ceremony for the officers. The officers will be here, their families. We're hoping that much of the staff will come, and we're going to invite the public to attend. You know, the first police force in 60 years, that should be an exciting evening. We're really, really pleased. Just going to give a little extra love to Public Works Department. Gentlemen, tonight, we were able to tour downstairs and see the improvements there. Hopefully, you're able to look out back and see the work that's been done. What our crew is able to do is, it's just remarkable, from the interior work, exterior work, road work, excavation. We have a really talented group of folks. It's going to save us some money, but beyond that, being able to look outside and see dirt moved around really kind of puts a fine point on the fact that it's coming.
It's coming.
And when the corporals get here next Monday, it's really coming. But it's, it's great to see after all this legwork, Steve you'd said to me earlier, we started this process maybe four years ago, and really see it come to fruition and now, and, you know, by the end of this year, we're going to be fully up and running and ready to hit the streets is very exciting.
Anything else?
No.
No, sorry. No, thank you. Announcements, Tuesday, November 19th, planning commission meeting has been canceled. Tuesday, November 26, 7:00 PM, zoning hearing board meeting right here at 1240 Maple Avenue. Thursday and Friday, November 28th, 29th, Thanksgiving holiday, township office is closed. Monday, December 9th, 6:00 PM, our meeting, the board of supervisors, right here. Monday, December 16th, 5 to 7, is the official swearing-in ceremony for our new police officers. No old business, well, actually, yeah, planning and zoning business.
LTPC 316, REIT Network Popeyes Land Development Plan Time Extension. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a request from C-Packet Site Design Concepts Incorporated on behalf of REIT Network for a six-month extension of time to board the final plan.
Second, all the favors say aye?
Aye. LTPC 327 Millersville Apartments, 1896 Millersville Road Land Development Plan. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a land development plan for Millersville Apartments at 1896 Millersville Road, including requested waivers and modifications conditioned on adequately addressing the comments of the township engineer, October 2024 review letter.
Second, all the favors say aye?
Aye. LTPC 327 Millersville Apartments Indemnity Agreement. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve entering into an indemnity agreement with Millersville Apartments LLC for future maintenance responsibilities of drainage facilities in the PennDOT right-of-way Route 741 Millersville Apartments LLC received on November 1st, 2024.
Second, favors say aye?
Aye.
There's only one aye.
There's only one aye?
Yeah.
Did you not aye? Aye?
Oh, good.
No worries. I just want to see if you're paying attention.
LTPC 327 Millersville Apartments, PennDOT HOP permit. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve PennDOT's form titles authorization for agent to apply for highway occupancy permit for the proposed drainage facility improvement in the PennDOT right-of-way SR 741 Millersville Road necessitated by the Millersville Apartment Plan Development Plan.
Second, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
LTPC 329, 1515 Hillcrest Road, Stormwater Management Site Plan Time Extension. Mr. Chair, I move that we acknowledge and receive a time extension from Chester RDN III on register, on, I believe it's Regester Associates, on behalf of Carol Haas-Gervano until March 7th, 2024, for the approved approval of the 1515 Hillcrest Road Stormwater Site Plan.
Thank you. Second. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. New business.
Executing an options agreement from ATC Sequoia LLC, care of American Tower, to purchase communications easement in perpetuity for $360,000. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve an options agreement from ATC Sequoia LLC, care of American Tower, to purchase communications easement in perpetuity for $360,000.
Second, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Presentation of the 2025 draft budget for Lancaster Township. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the draft budget for 2025 Lancaster Township.
And if you could amend that to also direct me to advertise and prevent, and present the budget for public inspection.
And to advertise and present for public inspection.
Second, all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That'll be in newspaper, and we'll have a copy here at the township office.
Guest recognition and participation.
I don't have enough copies, but I thought Tom Daniels would be here, because this is more for him. But I have numerous complaints over the years from these, all these people that live here, live on Southwestern Avenue. And he sent me a letter telling me that he's sorry for my frustration, and that he's sent out at least 50 letters in the last five years, including 12 this year. Well, obviously, that's not working anymore. So on page two, I'm asking that maybe an ordinance be started, that there is some kind of monetary fees for these people that don't take care of their properties. And this is all the time, this is one block, 500 blocks southwest then, and out of the eight houses, five of them don't take care of their property. The first one at 501 is a junkyard, I mean, a total junkyard. Please drive by onto Fifth Street and look at the house. It's awful. Besides the fact that they keep putting their yard waste in their yard, and it just mounds up, and it's been there for years and years. Every single property out, and would you please put on there for Tom, make sure he gets this. 505, I just noticed their second floor window is broken out and still laying on top of the porch roof in shards. So when it gets windy, I'm sure they're going to start blowing around. And I don't know, did I have 509, where my neighbor on the other side just came over and said that he caught kids in 509's backyard saying, where can we find big enough rocks that we can throw through the windows? Because that house is owned by a slumlord. He has never rented it out there since the day he bought it. He uses it as a storage unit. That's all he uses it for. The place is deteriorating. I mean, if I wouldn't, I would be afraid to walk in the front porch, okay? Something has to be done with these properties that these people, and trust me, if I could afford to move out, I would. I would get out of there. But I've been there 27 years. And this, and when I bought the property, trust me, there was all older people that lived there, and everybody took care of the property. So I would like to see an ordinance of some kind, such as, well, my friend lives in Columbia. They have, they don't even get a warning letter. If your grass is more than 11 inches, you get a letter and $100 fine. There's no warning. So we need to have some kind of, because right now, what they do, they get the letter from Tom, they crumble it up and throw it in the trash, because they know he's not going to do anything. Nothing gets done. And it's the guy at 509, the slumlord, he's been there two times this whole season. He's cut the backyard lawn. He has done nothing between our properties and absolutely zero to the front of his property. And the people that just bought the house that are attached to them, I mean, they're coming over going, we don't know what to do. There's like all kinds of ants coming over. I said, well, wait, oh, and that's at 505, the one that's attached to me. They finally put a basement window in. They finally put a basement window in. I have bitched to him, excuse my language, several years about not having it. Last year I had thirty-three mice from their property come in because they didn't have a basement window in. It's, it's just, I don't know what you can do. And then the other thing that I'm asking for is, oh, about the, have an ordinance that you can't have a house and buy it and use it solely for the purpose of a storage unit. I know the city has an ordinance, you can't do that. And then the only other thing is the condemned house across the street. How long, how long is a house allowed to be condemned before somebody does something with it? And I know why, I'm, I'm pretty sure I know why they have not sold it. It's cause it has black mold in it. Cause when the two guys died in there in the winter, the, the water main broke inside and nobody ever did anything to that place for months, months and months and months. Well, by that time that it was summer, I'll, I'll bet you any money, there's, the whole place is full of black mold. So, but I don't know what to say other than we need to have some ordinances that people are made responsible for the properties. And that's not being done. You can't just keep sending out notices and notices and notices and not put something to it. Some repercussion, repercussion for not doing your, what you're supposed to.
Well, thank you first for putting all this together.
Okay.
Cause it creates a picture that we need to take a look at a little bit closely. Maybe, John, you could talk to, to Tom and see how we made it.
He's already had that same list.
Okay.
And.
We've got it again.
Yeah, most of the things on here we've already addressed.
Okay.
Yeah, now, some of these people have taken care of some of this stuff since I gave this same lit, thing to him. But it is every year, every, every year, it's the same thing over and over and over again. So, I don't know.
Well, thank you for putting this together.
Thank you for the time.
Sure.
And thank you for anybody that's been in the service. If, I don't know if any of you have been in the military, but thank you, if you have.
Thank you. Anyone else have any, uh, yes, sir.
Hi, uh, my name's Kyle Perry, I live on seventeen seventy-five Betschhorn Drive. And I was wondering about the basin I live over there. I know we've gotten letters in the past about it. I don't know if you guys are doing anything now, currently.
So, that would be a combination of you Ben and.
Yeah, I was just, I think I've seen him before.
Yeah.
This basin one?
Yeah, so on the, the, the single family dwelling lot.
Yep.
Do you want me to explain?
Uh, are you the gentleman who lives there?
Yes. Yes. So, my wife was in a town, but she's pregnant and sick and didn't wanna come, so she was like, you gotta go over there and figure out what's going on with it. So, I'm here.
Uh, this is probably a conversation that we should have outside the meeting.
Okay.
But if you wanna have it inside the meeting, we can.
We can, it's fine.
You, you, you folks are obligated to remedy the problem. The only course of action is either for you to make corrective action or for us to enforce corrective action and, and leave the property.
I think last we heard the lawyer say that you guys are at a standstill with it right now.
Well, rather than evict you.
And that's why they told us to just come, like, talk about it, that's why I'm here.
Well, maybe we should have another conversation, like, outside of.
That's fine.
This kind of meeting, we can sit down and.
I just wanna introduce myself and.
Yeah, certainly, thank you.
Cause I'm, I'm not like a ton of means, I've been paying lawyer fees. I just wanted to get faces and talk to you guys about it, so.
Sure, so, so, I mean, in a snapshot, uh, the corrective action of the basin is very, very expensive. The, if we go to enforcement, uh, that doesn't, that's not good for you.
No.
Uh, so we have, I have been dragging my feet on addressing this because I don't wanna put you in the street. So, at some point, the matter needs to be addressed. And we can do that sooner or we can do that later. Um, I think it's in everybody's best interest right now to do that later. But the issue's not going to go away. And sooner or later, the best, the basin needs to be corrected. You're not the cause of the problem. But when you purchased the property, you purchased the problem. And the per, the prior owner knew that the issue was there and should have disclosed that to you in the transfer of the property. So, I think at one point we made a very generous offer to purchase the property from you folks. You decided that our offer wasn't generous enough and, uh, that's where we stand.
Yeah. Okay. All right, I didn't know if anything was going on or if I need, we need to do anything else or.
I mean, the, the, the condition remains, the, the basin is in disrepair. It causes, uh, an erosive condition, it causes flooding downstream. And we, you folks unnoticed that you've gotta fix it, so.
Yeah, what other means to fix it? There's no, there's no fixing it for us, we can't get excavators down there and do all kinds of stuff.
Correct.
Be too done.
Correct.
I don't know.
Neither do I.
All right, well, nice to meet you guys, I guess.
I, I, I'll reach out to you after this and, and, and we can talk about it if we need to involve you. Again, I'm reluctant to do that because I don't wanna drive your bills up.
Yeah.
But until either one of us is ready to make corrective action, we're kinda stuck in this situation.
Okay, all right.
Great.
I'll let my wife know.
All right, thanks.
See you guys.
Thank you. Anyone else? No?